Everyone can please stand and join me in the. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion act on the council minutes of October 22nd, the committee of home minutes of October 24th? Any comments? All right, if not, clerk, please call.
Jim Bansma.
Hi.
Marie Fenske.
Hi.
Christine Schmidt.
Hi.
Bryce Remy.
Hi.
Forrest Fromme.
Hi.
Lisa Sullivan.
Hi.
All right, you got public appearances, Eugene.
Good evening. This will be a shortened report for this year's bike program. Repairs for flats, there was only two compared to. There was three repairs for various problems. Two bikes had been damaged with rear derailers and bent stinger brackets. Three bikes that had broken shifters. And then there was just a lot of minor adjustments on a lot of other bikes, changing some ball tires, stuff like that. The mainly is I want to start off with, I want to thank Josh Mookie for the purchase of the ear tags at the beginning of this year. Because without it, if the program was able to keep going. I want to thank the police department for their support when retrieving two bikes that were left at a residence for over six days. I want to thank all the individuals who helped with returning bikes to the park locations. Thank you to the individuals who sent in donations. Thank you to Bryce Remy for running a fundraiser. Thank you to the Horicon Phoenix Program for their donation. The community has stepped up big time with support with donations, not only in money, but also donating bikes. There is 22 bikes in storage, which include all 12 of the original specialized bikes. I have 15 bikes at my house that were donated or picked up during bulk pickup. I will be repairing them this winter along with the help from a young man who has taken it upon himself to air out cuts that were low. He has also been by me several times, learning the skill of bike repair. Sawyer, thank you for all you have done. Just this week, I have picked up two additional bikes. From there, yeah, I do just support the program. I will keep going. I do know I have the limit of 30 bikes put into the program. So some of the bikes that may not be worthy of repair or ones that are not used often, I will just remove. I will stay under the 30. I plan on maybe some of these bikes just trying to sell in the spring or trade with somebody that needs a larger bike or to create some sort of fund so I have something to start with next year. All the donations that have been sent in this year, it basically has been spent. That's just over $700. I do have a large supply of some tires and tubes and some shifters and derailers that I purchased, knowing that I'm constantly getting these kind of repairs. One thing I'd like to do next year would be to have a couple of days where before we put them out, to have kids come and learn how to ride a speed bike, learn how to shift it proper. I see a lot of the problems happening because failure to understand how to shift. The other thing is I ran into a lot with this year with damage from rust from being out in the weather. I changed a lot of cables and cable housings that were just rusted and frayed and it creates a problem in shifting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I think we should thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, I'm going to open a public hearing on the zoning change. Does anyone want to talk about the zoning change from R1, single-family residential district to R2, multifamily residential district for the vacant land located in the 200 block of South Finch Street?
I thought there was going to be more of a presentation where I could see what they were talking about, what they wanted.
This is just the rezoning? This isn't, yeah.
Whether it be a presentation possibly or?
Probably when we get to that part, this is just zoning.
Yeah, I do support it. I'd like to see more of what actually is going to be put there.
In a few of the past planning commission minutes that are online on the Horicon website, you can see kind of the renditions. But right now, this is just going from R1 to R2. This, the school district sold the land to the developer and this is just making it so they could put in the condos. Sorry, they're putting, this is just a change. That's as loud as I can talk. I'm sorry, I can go in the microphone. This is, like I said, this is just, is this working?
No.
No. This is just, this is just for rezoning. That's it. So this isn't going to be over the plans or any of that stuff. There are some of those in prior minutes, but this again is just for the rezoning, this particular meeting.
Like building or no?
I'm not sure.
We don't have a final development agreement, I think.
Oh, we kind of did. Yeah, we do have, we do have a development agreement.
Been planning a survey and then market and flag brought out.
Yeah. But when they're going to put a shovel in the ground?
Well, they'd have to submit a site plan.
Yeah, there's a lot of steps still to go.
They'll have to submit a site plan to the plan commission. Plan commission will have to approve it. And again, we don't own the property, so.
Now, this is, this is months down the road for some of those kind of things. You got, anyone else? Do you have any questions?
That will come with, yeah, with months like this and or what's going to happen.
Okay. All right. Do you have a motion to close the public hearing? Give me a second.
A second.
All right, clerk, please call.
Jim Bansma.
Hi.
Marie Fenske.
Hi.
Christine Schmidt.
Hi.
Bryce Remy.
Hi.
Forrest Fromme.
Hi.
Lisa Sullivan.
Hi.
All right, I'm looking for a motion act on the ordinance to change the land use from R1 to R2 for the parcel listed in your packet. Full move.
Give it to Bryce. I think I heard Bryce first.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Hi.
Forrest Fromme.
Hi.
Lisa Sullivan.
Hi.
Jim Bansma.
Hi.
Marie Fenske.
Hi.
Christine Schmidt.
Hi.
All right, next, I'm going to turn the pulpit over to Kristen.
So, everybody's favorite meeting night, public hearing on the budget and levy. You had earlier, probably a week or two ago, received a packet with the budget that to adopt tonight that came out of your committee of whole meeting where we sat together for about three hours and formulated that particular budget. I'm just going to go over some of the logistics here. The 2020, 2025 city of Horicon budget is comprised of 14 separate funds, including enterprise funds and is approximately $15 million. The general fund is the fund most are familiar with, as this is the primary operating fund and funded with levy tax dollars and state aids. The 2025 general fund budget is a deficit budget, meaning the proposed expenditures outweigh the proposed revenues. The proposed deficit is $602,845. The deficit is planned to be paid for with the city's existing general fund fund balance. As previously discussed at the committee of whole, the budget is a plan and things change throughout the year. Although the 2024 budget was adopted as a $475,395 deficit, it is anticipated to end at a $7,145 deficit. Important to note that although the city is proposing to adopt a deficit budget, they still meet the expenditure restraint program guidelines dictating expenses cannot increase by more than 4% over 2024. The proposed budget reflects increased expenditures of 3.9%. Funding projected to receive in 2025 for complying with ERP is $88,000. The general fund is primarily financed via levy and state aids. The proposed 2024 general fund levy is $2,115,148, a 1.21% decrease from last year, which equates to a $25,964 decrease. This is the maximum amount that we are allowed to levy. The other portion of the levy is called debt service. The city is permitted to levy costs associated with general obligation debt. The proposed 2024 debt service levy is $450,251, a 1.12% or $5,001 increase over last year. The total 2024 proposed levy is $2,565,399, a .81% decrease or $20,963 decrease from 2023. In order to arrive at the mill rate, the amount of property tax you will pay per thousand, you need the levy, which we have already covered, and the equalized value. The city went through a complete revaluation in 2024, which has caused the equalized values to dramatically increase over 2023. I did distribute earlier in the evening, the sheet, it'll look like this, will be on your desk. It shows the values, the equalized values from 2023 compared to 2024. So I'll definitely show you where they have dramatically increased and in the areas where they increased the most. The equalized value in 2024 is $133 million or 54.82% greater than 2023. The most notable increase is in residential improvements with an 81.9% increase. Please note that residential improvements comprise 60.9% of the equalized value. This increase in equalized value has caused the city's mill rate to decrease to 6.80918792 per thousand. So what does that mean to you? Yes, the city's levy decreased. Yes, the city's mill rate decreased. However, that does not necessarily mean your property taxes will be lower. Remember, the mill rate is charged per thousand. And with the revaluation, your home is now closer to market rate, which for most of us means an increase in value. So while the mill rate decreased, the per thousand value of your home has increased, meaning many of us will see an increase in our property taxes. However, the increase in taxes is not proportionate to the increase in home value. An important note is the only figure the city has control over in the mill rate equation is the levy. And the city's levy decreased from last year. Utilizing the proposed general fund and debt service levies, the city's equalized values, the 2024 mill rate, including the TIF districts, is 7.887 with lots of other numbers, per 1,000. On a $250,000 value home, the city's portion of taxes would be $1,971.80. These are my notes, fun facts about the budget. Kind of going along with this, Josh, are you comfortable with me talking about your tax bill?
Go ahead.
I did look up Josh's tax bill and compare it to last, to last year's. And for example, I think, what did we figure? The value of your home increased 94%, I believe. But the taxes have increased 27%. And again, if you look at that sheet in front of you, you can see where that is coming from because the most notable increase from the revaluation came in residential. That's all I have to say. Yes, or something more you want me to say at this time?
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on the 2025 budget. All right. What's that?
Jim made a motion to close it.
Close it? Is there a second to close? All right, any comment? All right, Matt, clerk, please call the roll.
Jim Bansma.
Hi.
Marie Fenske.
Hi.
Christine Schmidt.
Hi.
Bryce Remy.
Hi.
Forrest Fromme.
Hi.
Lisa Sullivan.
Hi.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Item nine, act on the ordinance number 2024-24, an ordinance adopting the 2025 budget and the 2024 tax levy for the city of Horicon. Full move.
I do want to just note in here, the one that you got in your packet in section three states, there is hereby levied a tax of $2,565,398. The true number is $399. That dollar rounding keeps getting me in the debt service levy. So the correct ordinance is here tonight and that is what is being signed. So again, the here, it is a levy tax of $2,565,399, not the $398 that's indicated on, in the ordinance in your packet. My apologies for any confusion.
All right, floor is open.
Got a question on, of course, we've got 410.
What?
Okay. Questioning the $297,820 refurbishment for 25 pure stone. Okay. I think there's bigger needs within the city of Horicon. The PPW Department of Dogs Equipment is updating and replacing before we refurbish 1900 fire.
It's council's budget. Anyone have any comments? My reasoning, I will throw that out there as mayor, is because this is, this was being folded in the debt service. I think we calculated that on a house, on a $200,000 house to refurbish this fire truck, $250,000 house would be $25 a year.
For 10 years.
For 10 years.
Which would be the life of the debt payment.
So to refurbish this fire truck would cost the average $250,000 house, $25 a year. That's if, now, if we weren't doing the big debt right now for East Walnut Street next year, probably wouldn't have gone through because otherwise we'd have to take out that only for that. So the reason it's in the budget, other than it'd be nice just to have all the fire department vehicles ready to go, is that it's really a very low cost. I agree with you. The stuff that Cody has, the red truck and stuff are worse. But that wouldn't go into a debt service, especially not a $60,000 truck. That, that's, that's the reason that didn't go in there. And we were discussing behind this, you know, when we had our meetings up front, there's no question that they were going to be at the top and it wasn't your top need.
We had physically thought that wasn't functional.
Yeah, so, so when Cody brought in his needs list, if it would have been on the top, it would have went through. It was down a little farther and the stuff like the brine machine and stuff and that was a higher need and we're not, and the brine machine's over a hundred and some thousand and we're not even putting that into the debt. This is going in there simply because we already have that. Now, next year, I don't anticipate any need for, to take out a big giant debt. So this is our, this, in my eyes, was the one time, but I also defer to you guys. You guys have the vote.
So you're saying when it comes time to replace the stuff that Cody mentioned about, you know, the trucks and stuff, that's going to come in next year's budget, that that won't be a borrowing event, that'll just be budget?
You wouldn't borrow, you wouldn't borrow that for a $60,000 vehicle? I mean, that's no different than, I mean.
I heard, I thought there was more than just $60,000.
But I mean, that's a.
There is, there's a loader and there's the other truck.
Pieces of equipment, but yeah, if you were to go buy a car, it's been a while since I've had a new car, but I'm guessing the car I'd get is probably going to be $60,000 at least. The bank's never given me a 10-year loan. So you're not going to, they're not.
I tend to be impression it was more than just $60,000.
So next year, on a, if it affects Cody's equipment, which involves a front-end motor, a dump truck and a pickup truck, that bill will be $324,000 plus whatever goes up. Do you have that money laying around or are we going to spend on that?
There's going to be some things that come off that we won't be able, won't have to spend next year, like the filter, you know, the filter media replacement, the brine, those two things are, there are already 200,000. And there are a couple other places, but those are going to be the highest priority, especially that red truck. I can't imagine that wouldn't be the number one priority you put forward next year.
Oh, yeah.
Because someone's going to fall through that floorboard. I would say honestly, to answer your question, yes. I think there's enough things that we're paying for this year that would be made up for it next year, that we don't have to repay. It's not like we're going to, you don't have to put two new playgrounds in because we're putting two new playgrounds in now. We won't have to do the basketball court. We won't have to get a squad car next year, right? So there, there's going to be that one. I just, this is a borrowing event where we could just take care of the fire truck. But at the same time, like I said, your guys' vote, you guys, that's why we have these meetings, right?
I guess my question is why are we refurbishing that truck?
Tony. Tony, can you come around? Or Mark?
I just, I don't, I didn't hear the question.
He's asking why the refurb.
I thought we had this discussion for three and a half hours the other night.
I don't think we talked about it pretty quickly in there, or just the truck?
I mean, we, we talked about having a piece of equipment sitting at the city garage right now that we didn't do a pump test on. We did not put tires on it. We're, that's kind of sitting there and then hopefully we can use that for the refurb. We had two other pieces of equipment that were 30-plus years old. One of them blew up. Second one is sitting there. Hopefully we can get some use out of it while we refurb this one. And we ran the hell out of that truck. It'd be nice to get that truck refurbished, cleaned up, ready to go. We'll get 15 to 20 years out of it again. And we're going to, the next, the next time we go for a truck, say if we don't refurb it, we go for a new one next year, it's going to be $2 million or $1.5 million. That engine that we bought two and a half years ago and paid $650,000 for, it is just shy of a million dollars right now. So I'm trying to be fiscally responsible here, get a refurb, get 15 to 20 out of it, save the city some money. Next time they come for a budget, you know, if it doesn't get refurbished, I'll be asking for a new one. We'll be looking at it over a month. The same goes if something, you try to do the preventative maintenance because if something were to happen in 2062, which is going to be a lot to refer. If something were to happen about, you know, in 64, if the truck get marched up against the city garage, we have to replace a pump or something like that, it's going to be on the thousand and not more, just for pump. We're trying to prevent it, prevent it, we may just be in this truck, so we can get another 20 years out of it.
If you referred this, there aren't really any vehicles that need to be replaced.
Nothing coming up, no.
How many miles this is engine has?
Hard part to ask for miles? It'd be hours, more than dollars.
Hours?
I don't know. I'd have to go. And it's the amount of years that that thing has existed.
Truck has 18,000 miles on it.
What's that?
Truck has 18,000 miles on it.
So you should ask, you know, more than that.
It's not a lot of miles.
It's not miles, it's pumping, it's engine hours, pump hours.
So if you go to a scene that's one mile away, that's $112. It's not miles, it's hours.
This is a secondary, right? Well, if we go auto aid, it's a primary for the city.
Right.
So yes, we can, it's a second truck to roll, right, it's a second call. So it's, so if we're out on auto aid, we're out an engine, we get something in the city, it's our first due on our, first due on ours.
The other, the other aspect is we're setting trucks up, we used to have three engines in an area, now we have two engines. That was the deal to get 1961. So we have to set these trucks up for different types of events as well. So right now, 1961, structure fodder, right, other, other extrication, stuff like that. 62's got some grass fire stuff, wildland fire stuff, also has some extrication tools that we can't all fit, right? I mean, so you're trying to, if we have to take two trucks to a call because it's something that's, we can't rely on, you know, we're not going to give you a time. If they can even manage trucks, going through those programs, we're really starting to get people. We're likely to get a truck.
For all, we don't know what you mean when you call the truck by its number. I don't know what 62 is. Is that the really old one that's up at the shop or is that?
That's an 64, that's an engine. 62 is our second out engine, our, our brutal engine. So basically what we've decided is 61, the new engine, new engine, you can call it a pump further engine, is our auto aid and our first due. 62, which is our second out engine, which would be our first due if we're.
Is that the one you want to fix?
That's our, going to be our Mavis engine and, and our secondary engine.
So 1962 is the one you want to get fixed?
That's the secondary engine, that's 65, correct. 64 is 30-plus years old, wasn't pumped us last year, needs tires. I didn't put anything into it because I thought it was a waste of the city's money.
And that's one you plan on selling?
That's the one I'd like to use if we refurb this thing this year.
So you use it during?
Back in service, so we at least have two engines.
You leave it in service?
That's the big problem with not having three engines anymore. If we lose one, we're down.
And if we have a call that's in the country and say the guy's got a mile one driveway, nothing, one engine can talk to the other engine, we either have a display line itself. We really need two engines. We need to have them in a lot or we'll be killed.
And to go on the fiscally responsible side, if we did the same thing with the $1 million truck, that'd be $100 on a taxpayer per year, for 10 years, correct?
It was quite the math. I honestly, I can't recreate that right now in front of us, so.
That's okay. I was trying to think, but to me, it seems more fiscally responsible to go with the refurb.
For any reason, we couldn't refurb it next year? Curious. Is it because we wouldn't, we're not planning a big borrowing event for next year, is that why this would be a bad idea versus?
The third engine, we're not putting any money in, we'll use it this year as a backup, but 62's being referred. This is my understanding.
Yeah, it's true. Because I got the same question. You know, what's, what's the urgency of being a refurb? It wasn't a matter of. you know, what's, what's the urgency of getting it refurbished? It wasn't a matter of backup. I mean, at any given point, you walk in and see a truck you can't take out because if that, or something else is going on, any of this group and life happens. But, um, yes, the maintenance piece that I'm curious as far as what's the drive for, it need to be done for refurb? If it can't be done just through regular maintenance, there's got to be something that's driving it to be refurbished, other than that, that's from year, it's time to be perfect. Is there anything we can't, issues or something that's going with the pump? I couldn't remember if we had any issues.
Not with that one, yeah.
That's what we're trying to avoid. Those bigger issues, the small maintenance stuff, our city does a great job in it. Maintaining the stuff that we can, it's the seals and the pumps and all the little things that go in the system that if they fail, that pump's trash and we're all.
And that's all original from 2005 purchase.
What's that?
That's all original from 2005 purchase.
The foam system has, on it has it for four or five years. We haven't fixed it because, I mean, I think it was, last time we checked, it was 20 grand for a foam system. And that would be part of the refurb on the foam system. And then split the pump.
Does it refer to the foam warranty that can guarantee this is not 10 years on it?
I don't know what their warranty is on the air, but it's got to be refurbished, I'd have to look at that. I don't know how long, how long the warranty is on emergency, but I don't, we can tend to that if you'd like to ask me for it. The worst thing about those rigs too, is kind of like a squad not running, you jump in them and you put them to the floor. It's basically our end to them.
I totally understand the value of preventative maintenance, of doing something for it.
Yes, I know.
20 years seems like a long time to run something without doing it.
Okay. Ladder truck was refurbished at 28 years old. There's many more mechanical moving parts on that truck. That truck is refurbished 28, 28 years old. Kind of question, why a pumper at 20 years old? Checking with the dealer, the retail value on that truck today is anywhere from 80 to 100,000 dollars. The value after refurb is 100,000 dollars because refurbs are done normally, personal preference. As far as longevity, JLP will be run interbuilt tractors, most in top line equipment, nothing sturdy. First service at 40,000 miles, and they expect that truck to be replaced at 600,000 miles. Go up to a different type of hauling, they're probably the worst hauling, it can do. Mycon out of Jamesville, Wisconsin, with 300 trucks on the road, Oshkosh trucks. Trucks are serviced every 10,000 miles, trucks are replaced at 450,000. And if you notice, those trucks do a lot of, get a lot of wear and tear. Oregon's truck, 18,000 miles, about 3,000 hours on there. My personal truck has 116,000 miles and with 4,000 hours on my personal 2015 GMC pickup. Called Leonard's, who's certified, pure dealer, repair place. Talked to them and they were actually surprised that I had the question that we were refurbishing that truck, very surprised. I called Wyatt Wega, pure service place, said we'd be doing the refurb on the truck, and they said various, they do very few refurbs, most, most of their work is repairable. The 300, the 297,000, a lot of money to put into something that. All right, sorry, Tim, I'm going to move aside. All right, so to answer the, to go back to the aerial refurb, I'm guessing aerial is going out 5% of our costs. So you can probably get away with 28, 30 years, I hope so, because you know, money goes through costs, especially the refurb on them. The JLP comparison, struggled a little bit with that, not like safety vehicles. We, what we're trying to prevent is getting on CMF pump though, or, or getting hit. I mean, the light situation is, it's not good on that truck at the time. And that's a smaller portion of that bill, but it's still to be brought up. We don't get seen very well in that truck, so we'd like to also get that as well in the refurb. The, the pump, looking at the brakes, we're not replacing the engine, so it's not like, you know, from a JLP side of the miles, we're not replacing it. So we're trying to look more at the life factors of that. So I, I understand the 297,000 is a big bill, but as a constituent, I would rather see the money go towards that than to buy a new truck. Because we don't want to use the things. So, I mean, I don't know if you hold constituents, what their, what their thought process would be if we bought that truck. Well, here, here's the thing, this place is telling me that the truck is worth a hundred thousand on the most, okay? Sell that truck to them, take this 300,000 dollars and Mycon, your truck for 600,000 might not be your first years, but it'll be a truck that'll, brand new truck that'll respond to a fire, put one on, put one on. Sure. But if we make that decision today to buy a new truck, you're not going to get it because we. But so long as everything, everything goes up. I mean, look how long it took, you know, we stalled on 61, we lost a hundred grand on 61, because we stalled on that, and it took years again. So you can do that now and then hope that 62's, because it'll go up in the next three years. And it goes up, and I thought it's a hundred thousand dollar pickup truck.
Yep, on the higher lot at work.
Yeah, yeah. Stop next time it's a truck.
But just to make sure I understand this well, like if we cut this, it doesn't just mean Cody's getting the stuff, so you can't do a 10-year loan on that. So I mean, keep arguing over this is kind of pointless. I'd rather see the fire trucks, we can't go put Cody's stuff in here, which I know is what most of your goals are.
Also, important thing to note is that after, so even, so this is in the 2025 budget, obviously due to the expense of this particular item per the purchasing policy after January 1st. Mark's coming before you guys again to ask permission. So that'll be another meeting where we get to see that smiley face. Because 410, this is capital equipment, so 410 does not affect your lobby. Which if you read the ordinance, that's on the table. Just pointing that out.
Before the change, you probably do need a motion at this point to change it before we vote.
You already have, well, you have a motion on the table.
To adopt the budget as it is.
Correct. Now, have you read the ordinance? The motion on the table is to adopt the ordinance.
Go ahead, if you're saying that makes me want to re-read.
The ordinance is talking that you are, I mean, you are adopting what's existing in Exhibit A, which does contain expenses out of 410, which is capital equipment, which you guys are talking about this evening. Section two is at the city budget for 2025, calling for a tax levy, which is what we're talking about. Section three, again, talking about the tax levy. And then section four, the tax. And again, the budget you have before you tonight, you guys approved unanimously at a meeting already.
Yep, I understand that.
Unanimously.
Well, this discussion wasn't had at the previous meeting.
What's that?
Unfortunately, this wasn't brought up at the previous meeting.
That's probably because the department head, whose other items didn't say, hey, these items weren't approved, I want these.
I agree.
I mean, I didn't get my parking lot, but I didn't say, hey, the mayor took out my parking lot, I want my parking lot. I don't care that much about my parking lot. Cody didn't care as much about his items because he had other items that took priority. And he knows he can't get a million dollars worth of stuff because he'd never hear the end of it.
Yeah. And the fact of the matter is, like, those vehicles are running, like Kristen said, they are not, probably they're going to come out of general or, you know.
We do, so.
Capital.
Every year, there is money in the budget that transfers some of the levy dollars into your capital equipment fund, and that is how we are able to pay cash for some of the smaller items. Although that being said, $120,000 brine machine isn't necessarily a small item, but, you know, in the grand scheme of life, it is. I, I mean, you guys are not working with a endless supply of funds. Everybody's stuff is time sensitive and necessary and.
Well, I think that's why everyone's trying to make the most educated decision possible.
Correct. You worked hard for the money. So hard for the money.
You, you finish your thought?
Yeah, I, I think that.
Do you have anything? All right.
I mean, I, I mean, obviously, I mean, I guess at this point you can, you know, make an amendment to pull it out of the budget, or you keep it in there and you.
Then that's what's unfortunate.
Fight about it again after the first of the year when it comes to that.
Discussion, I didn't know.
Well, right, and it's a motion on the table.
So.
I mean, you, I mean, and I'm not, I mean, because you're really not, because you're really not amending the motion. Because I mean, right now, the motion on the table is.
That's it.
The ordinance.
And this has to pass five to one?
You need, yep, it's an ordinance, because it is a budget ordinance, so you need three quarters vote, so five yeses to pass the budget.
It was Bryce and Marie.
Bryce made the motion and Marie seconded the motion. And that's the motion for this particular ordinance that you have before you with the exhibit. I mean, obviously, you know, you could vote on it and it doesn't pass, and you could make another motion and see if another one passes. But again, at that point, you're changing the exhibit, not the levy.
Do you want to explain that?
I have no other questions for discussion. Jason has been brought up, but I'm.
Right.
I mean, am I explaining your options or am I not explaining your options?
I think you explained it. Let's call the rule.
Okay, so this is a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-24, 2025 budget and the 2024 tax levy. Bryce Remi?
Aye.
Forrest Fromme?
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan?
Aye.
Jim Banzma?
Nope.
Marie Fenske?
Aye.
Christine Schmitz?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on, Personnel and Finance Committee report, Forrest.
Personnel Finance Committee met in November 18, 6:00 PM here at City Hall, all members present. Public appearance by Scott Geeson, and some options for the DPW and request fire department calls. We had a motion to approve our minutes in October, and a motion to approve disposal of records for police department. Another motion for adding the Friends of Orkham Parks, Friends of Orkham Parks fundraising, required to be included in our tax bill. And a motion to approve our bills for October. So our next meeting, Thursday, January 16, 2025, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, in the during the council session. At 6:50. We did set our next meeting for January 1st, the next one available for December, it's expected to be right the day before council. And everything we do is going to council whether it's now we vote on it, so that makes sense.
Roger. Great, thank you. Next, we have Public Works, Jim.
Public Works and Development Committee, installed order at 6:00 PM, all the personnel members present, Van Smut, Fenske and Schmitz, members absent, none. Motion by Fenske, second by Schmitz, approved October 2nd, 2024 minutes, all voting aye, motion carried. Public appearance, none. Cody Vanderhigh, Director of Public Works Utilities, provided a monthly update on the DPW in waterways, slaughter departments. Discussion was, there was discussion on DPW equipment grades. Discussion on street maintenance, set the next meeting for Thursday, December 5th, on the 24th, 6:00 PM, DPW conference. Motion by Van Smut, second by Schmitz, adjourned, all voting aye, adjourned at 7:15 PM.
Thank you. Public Safety, Marie?
Public Safety met November 12, at 6:00, all present. Motion for minutes passed, Eugene Rossin spoke about additional fire tragedy within the city and public appearance. Restaurant safety, thank you to the fire department and VSCR systems during trick or treat. And we had great feedback, the presence of town was really nice. Special on fines, how fines are determined, Police Chief Burkin provided a monthly update on the police department. And we passed two operator licenses, next meeting Tuesday, December 10, 6 o'clock, and adjourned.
Thank you. Next, we have Park and Rock, Bryce.
Park and Rock was called, ordered at 6:00 PM by Chairperson Remi, everyone was present, there was a motion that passed to approve last month's minutes. Our sole public appearance was Rich Apple, that the senior center program is moving under the rock department in the Williamsdale under shared custody. Vanderhigh gave a parks report, the new rec director, Michael, I'm going to stop with that lesson, I'm not going to try. It's the second thing, he's running programs. The Aquatics Center report, they were going to talk about the pool contract, we talked about it later on. Apparently gave an update on the Friends of Orkham Parks fundraising, review of the neighboring community park rental fees and board facilities in line with neighboring fees. Discussed the difference between athletic field and baseball field on park rental form. There was a motion to approve renaming the athletic field section and modify the rent park quality of rental fees to increase the park. That passed, there was a discussion on bicycle wrecks, there was a discussion on pool contracts, with a motion to approve pool contract option number one. There was another motion to approve the refundal of the Orkham Storkville City's street use permit that carries. There was a motion to approve the donation from Bryce Remi for the historical preservation sign project. Voting Iowa Sullivan, who moved the employee from the abstained, we voted on giving no meeting in December and set our next meeting date for Monday, January 20th. 6:00 PM, the conference room, adjourned 6:30, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Plant Commission, Lisa.
We met in the regular session, it was held fifth quarter at 6:00. All members present, except for Anderson. Also in attendance, we had Alex Williams, MSA, Paul Appleback, present builders, Cody Johnson, Vault Fleet Systems. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes from September 9th, and it was, there were no public appearances. And there was also a motion by Gallinack, second by Vanderhigh, to recommend to the council the rezoning of that property, the Orkham School District, from R1 to R2 that was discussed before. It was all in favor of the motion here. No action on the site plan review currently, with the expectations of MSA bringing it back to a future meeting after cold ordinances on plant commission recommendations on that. Motion to adjourn, all in favor of the motion was carried, and we adjourned at 7:20.
Thank you. All right, for my report, I'm going to keep it really short. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. All right, number 16, we're going to act on the disposal of the public records from the PD, Forrest?
Take a motion to approve the disposal of public records from the PD department with the.
Is there any discussion on them, on the records that the P D wants to try? Or if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Next we're acting on a request from the Friends of Horicon Parks for a Horicon Parks fundraising flyer to be included in the tax bill mailing, Forrest.
Make a motion to approve adding the Friends of Horicon Parks fundraising flyer to be included in the property tax bill mailing. Um, Kristen did say that's as minimal effort on her staff and if somewhere to come up where it's gonna be from, it just wouldn't be included. So it's not any additional. Kristen's office to do this.
And if it causes the postage to go up, then it doesn't get included as well. Yeah. Which it shouldn't, cause it looks like Bryce is looking to keep that a pretty small piece of paper.
I got it down to a fourth of a sheet of paper now.
Just make sure the site is okay.
Yes.
All right, let's call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye. I'm saying, sorry. I changed my job saying as, as in a flow.
Yes, we'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Number eighteen, we're acting on the twenty twenty-five Horicon Aquatic Center operation contract, Bryce.
I'll make a motion to approve option one, specifically for the Horicon Aquatic Center operation contract.
Is that the one?
Yeah.
Oh, I know which one's option one.
They're in here.
That's the one Cody put in the budget already as a placeholder.
Is that the ninety?
Oh, ninety, I'm sorry. I was looking at today's budget received.
Oh, I don't even see the options. Is it the ninety-two, six twenty-five?
Ninety-six, eight, ten.
Oh, there it goes.
Yeah, the first, the first one you see is the twenty-four budget. And then you see down.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the contract? Or if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next, act on the request of the Horicon Historical Society to refund the street use permit fees for their haunted history event, Bryce.
I'll make a motion to approve the refundal of the Horicon Storgos Site for their street use permit fees.
Discussion? Or if not, clerk, please call.
Yeah, but we didn't act on it at that time.
Yeah, that was a good question.
Yeah, they didn't act on it at that time because they went to, you're not gonna improve it until after they had the.
Yeah, it makes sense. I remember this exact same, you know. Great. Clerk, please call the roll.
Motion to approve the request for reimbursement of street use permit fees in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars to the Horicon Historical Society for their haunted history event. Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
All right, next we're acting on a donation of historical preservation signage for placement at my best friend's trail in Riverbend Park. Bryce.
Can I make a motion on this or should I abstain?
If you're, are you gonna abstain?
Should I abstain? That's my, kinda my question. I was gonna ask.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the signage?
Yeah, what's this trail? That's Washington Street Trail. I'd never name it. We named it, I can't believe years ago.
It's behind J J's old house, you know?
Okay, guys.
Yeah, it's, it's basically a service road that everyone locks on for the service.
Yeah. Yeah, they'd be very similar to those sites in there. It's sort of animal, it'd be focused thing on historical buildings or events. Like, they haven't done something out with a little more wagon.
This is the site you're donating personally, Chris?
This would be on me.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought.
All right, let's call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Abstain.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
All right, next we're acting on rental fees at Riverbend and Dishar Fall Fields, Bryce.
Okay, so Bryce out.
I'm sorry, this is a mess.
I was just a little confused. Um, and don't worry about the whole Horicon Recreation Department. I'll just put that up where it belongs. But I, I. I guess I was confused. Because they're getting rid of the twenty-five dollars per team. Do they realize they're getting rid of that? Do they wanna get rid of that?
Yeah.
That was my understanding. They basically wanted to make the rental of the baseball fields the same across the board, whether they're like the one Dishar or the one. That was my understanding.
Meaning it's the same regardless of.
Yeah.
And I believe.
But concession stand will not be included because concession stand is rented separately.
Right.
Yep. I'm fine doing that on. There is a lot going on. I just tried to, I parts guide them into something.
No, like I, I understand your, your notes here. I under, I just wanted to make sure that that's what was really happening.
Yeah.
Bryce's a motion. Do you have a second?
Not sure how you're gonna word that.
Is it, is it a, um, is it, now like they have terminals, so and there's several teams days. Is it a flat fee?
Yeah.
Is that.
Yeah.
Deal for the day?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's with all the concessions. That's the way I'm.
Yeah.
So, I didn't say that's easy to do, like, it's a concession stand.
It's, it's not going to include the concession stand. So. Because the concession stand is something that you would rent separately.
Yeah, their, their, their concern is the twenty, the.
I've just read.
Okay. The cost per team and the lights.
It really doesn't matter because you guys always tell them they don't have to pay the rental fee anyway, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say that wrong?
I'm ready. All right, we have a, a motion and a second from Christine. I think we're ready to call.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Next we have act on hiring of EMS personnel. Do you wanna fill us in?
Okay, so we have one applicant, Samantha Osborne, who is already an E M T. She's driving, she'll start running tomorrow. She's passed her background check and her drug screen and physical. So she's ready to go. Um, we also have Kristen Billings, who would, she'll have to go to school and filter everything. So I would like to be able to hire both of them. Um, obviously Kristen's will be finding the background and everything because we haven't done that yet. But Samantha passed everything, which is good to go. So.
Someone make a motion?
And she'll be able to run during the day.
All right, we got, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions for Carol and Jean? Or if not, clerk, just call the roll.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, next we're acting on a donation of End Track Tough Cut mower, H Q six eight two for D P W without having to say who's donating it. Do you wanna talk a little bit about the plan with it?
Um, this mower is a rough set mower, so this would take any kind of like sticks or any larger material up to one inch. Um, allows us to go through Riverbend Park and some other parks and clean up some of the undergrowth that's taken over.
And this is again donated.
Yeah.
To our city.
This fits our machine.
Why you see any motion?
Can I add this one here, man?
Yep.
All right. Slow move.
Any other discussion on it?
I hope that helps save awareness of down the road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Bryce and Jim. All right, any other discussion on it? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
All right, next we need to act on the date of next month's meeting.
Although some of us at personnel and finance thought that maybe December twenty-fourth could work for some of us that maybe don't like to sit with that particular group of family that evening and it would give us a great excuse to leave. We thought that maybe not all of you felt that way.
I'm cool with it. Unless she's, she's not on right now.
It's my family that night, so I can say that. Um, but so, so anyways, so December twenty-fourth is Christmas Eve. That would be our next council meeting. I'm assuming you all don't actually want to get together and meet that night, so pick another night.
So a week earlier, Tuesday.
I'm also out of state for seventeenth.
This is, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm delinquent. I didn't bring my calendar.
Seventeenth is a Tuesday before.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, cause that's when we kinda figured it would be because I know you guys like to keep it on a Tuesday, but I mean, if they can't make it.
No, I don't have my calendar at six o'clock.
I will be back in state on the nineteenth. So I don't, if you knew what I was doing, you would drink.
When do you leave?
When do I leave? I leave for summer second.
Well, we don't need everyone. We need a quorum.
Are you doing any data?
Yeah, just let me know.
I mean, if we can make it earlier on the seventeenth or later.
Can you do it over Zoom? Cause I could do that.
The seventeenth is out.
Sixteenth is a Monday.
Girls, the eighteenth.
Wednesday, the eighteenth.
Mondays are already girls. We don't need to make them long.
This is one of the others.
Yeah, we don't do hybrids.
Can't do hybrid.
But you're back on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Thursday.
If you have it the eighteenth, that's fine. I'll just be drinking in whatever state I'm in.
I, I could do eighteenth or nineteenth, normal, thank you for it.
We took this one.
Huh?
Will you, what day is your Christmas thing?
Seventeenth.
Okay. Why don't we just have a Thursday or not Thursday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Yes.
Jim, is it okay? We need another motion?
Oh, is that, is that, um. I was gonna say that's the season, then you all have church on Wednesday. Yeah.
Thursday? What? Who would do it earlier than Thursday?
No, cause then Christine and Forrest have a hard time making that, don't you?
Four from home on Thursday.
If they could do five thirty, I'll for sure be back.
Four from home on Thursday.
Do five thirty.
Five thirty on Thursday. Five is the mile. And I gotta go with the two.
To get this tag out.
We just, yeah, I mean, that could just be ours too. You make it by five on the Thursday? That makes.
I could make a point too. It, it's like a vacation. It's like my second to last day of work, so I just let my boss know.
Oh, yeah, why is it Thursday? I don't think we wanna do it on a Friday.
Can you do a Monday one on Zoom? I got Wednesday at five. Or Zoom, Zoom Wednesday at five, so Jim will go to church.
Sure.
And then we get, we get a whole entire crew.
Sure.
Zoom Wednesday, five o'clock, then you can get on, everyone get on. Is that, that way you can get to church. I know I'm gonna get forced to go as well, so.
Zoom twelve.
Eighteenth, right?
Twelve eighteen at five P M.
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody make that a motion?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a motion.
Eighteenth, Zoom.
Five P M.
Five P M, okay. Thank you.
Zoom tends to go quicker too.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim, you second it.
All right, let's.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
All right, next we have operator, operator licenses from Marie.
Um, I make a motion to approve the licenses as provided in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
I want Marie to pronounce Cheyenne's last name.
Oh, I have no idea.
Marie Fenske.
Sister.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
All right, financial statement for twenty twenty-four, October, Forrest.
Um, make a motion to approve the financial statement as provided in your packet.
Any discussion? Or if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Bills twenty twenty-four, October, Forrest.
Make a motion to approve the bills for October twenty twenty-four, you know, the three million twenty-five thousand, hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
Discussion. All right, please call the roll.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Lisa Sullivan.
Aye.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn in the closed.
Second.
Cody, you say it.
Thank you all.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.